Sure. All right, I will call this meeting to order. Uh, Madam Clerk?
Commissioner Dodge?
Here.
Commissioner Laborman?
Here.
Commissioner Rice?
Here. Uh, let us all stand for the Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Our county engineer?
Good afternoon, Commissioners, Administrator, ladies and gentlemen. Uh, we have three items today. The first, and they all are amended agreements. First is Resolution twenty-two dash sixteen thirty-three with Barge Design Solutions, Inc. for the Shute Mill Road Reconstruction Project in Harrison Township by adding ten thousand dollars to the original amount for revised total of six hundred seventy-six dollars and six hundred seventy-six thousand, six hundred and forty dollars. Sixteen thirty-four is with Russell Standard Corporation for the twenty-twenty-two Crack Seal Program countywide by adding forty dollars and sixty-one cents to the original amount for revised total of one hundred forty-four thousand, four hundred fifty-three dollars and eighty-five cents. And thirteen, or sixteen thirty-five is with Brumbach Construction, Inc. for the Philadelphia Drive Bridge Rehabilitation Project in Butler Township by adding sixty-eight thousand, three hundred thirteen dollars and seventy-two cents to the original amount for revised total of two million, eight hundred eighty-five thousand, three hundred fifty-nine dollars and forty cents.
Move to approve. Second. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye. County Sheriff?
Thank you, Commissioners. Under the County Sheriff, we have Resolution sixteen thirty-six authorizing an agreement with Cortai America LLC for automated quality assurance reviews in an amount not to exceed forty-seven thousand, four hundred and seventy-five through November thirtieth of twenty twenty-three.
Move for approval. Second. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Monday Community Correctional Institution.
Under Monday Community Correctional Institution, we have Resolution sixteen thirty-seven, Accept the Grant Amendment from the Ohio Department of Rehabilitation and Correction for Funds Made Available Under the Community-Based Correctional Facility Program by Increasing Funds in the Amount of four hundred and thirty-three thousand, one hundred and sixty-three.
Move to approve. Second. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye. County Coroner?
Under the County Coroner, we have Accept Grants as Subrecipients to Public Health, Dayton and Montgomery County. Resolution sixteen thirty-eight Bureau of Justice Assistance for the FY twenty-one Comprehensive Opiate, uh, Stimulant and Substance Abuse Site-Based Program Grant in an Amount of ninety thousand. And Resolution sixteen thirty-nine Ohio Department of Health for the FY twenty-two Ohio Department of Health Drug Overdose Prevention Grant to Fund a Family Advocate Position in the Amount of forty thousand.
I move for approval. Second. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
County Administrator?
Under the County Administrator on the Clerk's Office, we have Approved the Minutes of the Meeting on November first, twenty twenty-two. Resolution sixteen forty Approval of Bills and Resolution sixteen forty-one Approval on Travel of Expenses. Both of those lists are available in the Clerk's Office.
Move to approve. Second. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Administrative Services?
Good afternoon, Commissioners. Uh, it is a light day, Administrative Services. We have three resolutions for your approval. Beginning with sixteen forty-two, it's the Approval of Personnel Actions. This list is available in the Clerk's Office. Uh, the next two resolutions authorize agreements. Uh, the first is sixteen forty-three with Green County Adult Probation Department for Justice Web Interactions and Reports with a Revenue not to Exceed five thousand dollars through December thirty-first of twenty twenty-three. And last is Resolution sixteen forty-four with Pivotal Media LLC for Marketing and Advertising Services for the Communications Department in an Amount Not to Exceed ten thousand dollars through September thirtieth of twenty twenty-three.
I move for approval. Second. All those in favor say aye.
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 Commissioners, it needs to be known that John Parks specifically wore his voting tie today. And since he's not going to be able to say anything, because OMB is not on the agenda, it should be entered into the record that he has his official voting tie.
But we also have to enter into the record that Ward has on his vote socks. We can't see them quite as much as the tie, but it says vote on his socks.
He gets second place today.
Okay. Okay.
Thank you, Michael.
Environmental Services?
Good afternoon, Commissioners. John Hopwood sitting in for Matt Hilliard. We have two resolutions. Resolution sixteen forty-five to certify to the County Auditor the Solid Waste District Annual Property Charges for twenty twenty-three to be placed on the real property duplicate and collected in the same manner as any other real estate taxes. Lastly, uh, Resolution sixteen forty-six amend the connection fee ancillary fee schedules through December thirty-first, twenty twenty-three.
Move to approve. Second. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Human Services?
So we have Resolution sixteen forty-seven with authorizes an affiliation agreement with Case Western Reserve University for Educational Field Experiences for the undergraduate candidates pursuing a degree in social work program through December thirty-first of twenty twenty-four. Also Resolution sixteen forty-eight, which is authorizing an agreement with Hannah's Treasure Chest to renew the annual partnership agreement for twenty twenty-three services in an Amount Not to Exceed one hundred dollars.
Great. I like that we're giving that opportunity for students from Case Western. That's nice. I move for approval. Second. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Business Services?
Good afternoon, Commissioners. Under Business Services, I have several resolutions for you today. The first one is twenty-two sixteen forty-nine confirming the dissolution of the Dayton Alliance for Companion Animals, also known as DACA, Organization Pursuant to Section seventeen oh two point forty-seven of the Ohio Revised Code. Under Community and Economic Development, sixteen fifty authorizes an Economic Development Government Equity Edge Agreement with the City of Vandelia for the Kendall Electric Project, formerly known as Project Quarantine, in an Amount Not to Exceed one hundred fifty thousand dollars or point seven eight percent of the total project cost, whichever is less. Sixteen fifty-one, publish a Notice of Public Hearing to Review a Proposed Amendment to the Fiscal of the Year nineteen Action Plan to Take Public Comments and for Submission to the Amendment to HUD for the End of the Comment Period. The next one authorizes change order for the Building Regulations Department, which is sixteen fifty-two Safe Built LLC for Certified Building Official and Backup Building Official Services, including Commercial and Residential by increasing the original amount by twenty-five thousand dollars for a revised total of seventy-four thousand dollars. And lastly, sixteen fifty-three XPEX LLC for Commercial and Residential Plan Review Consulting Services by increasing the original amount by forty-eight thousand dollars for a revised total of ninety-six thousand dollars.
Move to approve. Second. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Uh, do, we do not have any comments by citizens, so our county administrator?
Thank you, Commissioners. Well, um, it is a great day for us as far as the Edge Program. Chris talked a little bit about it, but last week we received six Economic Development, uh, Government Equity or Edge Applications for the Fall twenty-two Grant Cycle. These included Huber Heights, Miami's Borough, two from Moraine, Union, and Vandelia. Uh, these Edge Applications were created to push projects, Commissioners, that are over the top if they already have funding supports. And it's a great way for Montgomery County, uh, to work with the businesses through our municipalities and to create and retain jobs. Uh, over the next few weeks, the Edge Advisory Committee, uh, will review the proposals and make determinations about funding projects. Uh, the proposals estimate that nearly nine hundred jobs will be created. Uh, this program not only helps us retain our tax base, it enables Montgomery County to successfully compete in the national and international markets. We currently allocate two point five million dollars per year to the Edge Program in two different cycles per year. And over the past thirty years, the program has created thousands of jobs. So thank you, Commissioners, uh, for your support in this program, both in the funding and for allowing us to continue, uh, the program going.
Thank you, Michael, and Chris and your team, thank you. You know, we often hear from, uh, companies that have received the grants and our Edge Dollars sometimes are what convince them to either stay or locate here because we're, we have that, that a lot of other communities don't. So, you know, they'll get state grants and maybe something from their local jurisdiction, but sometimes our money is the one that really puts it over where they need to be, so.
Absolutely.
It's been a great tool for thirty years now? Yeah, thirty years going on.
And the job creation is just phenomenal, so.
I know, when you said thousands, it's like, it's more than thousands, thousands and thousands. Yeah, so that's great. Thank you for bringing it up.
Well, um, this Friday is Veterans Day. And I, everybody who knows me, but not everybody in the audience, uh, I had an amazing experience a few weeks ago, uh, that although I've always deeply respected the military and have a special place in my heart, took it to a whole nother level, this experience that I had. Um, I was invited, uh, along with twenty-four other, um, organizations, employers across the state to, um, by the Ohio Committee for Employer Support of the Guard and Reserve. And we were invited to come for the day to a bus lift. And, uh, it was up in Rickenbacker, uh, air, uh, airbase in Columbus. And we got to take a ride on a huge plane called a KC one thirty-five Strato Tanker, which they described as a gas station in the sky. And, um, it was just like seeing, um, if you've seen the, the TV show SEAL Team and everything with all the web, you know, it was all carved out and, uh, pretty darn cool and very loud. You had to wear the, um, you know, earplugs. So you really got a feel for what our reservists, uh, experience when doing their jobs. And we got to watch, uh, we hooked up in the skies with a C seventeen from Pittsburgh. And everybody involved was doing training of how to refuel in the air. So for more than two hours, I think it's amazing that these two planes traveled in the same path at the same height and kept hooking and unhooking and hooking and giving different pilots the chance. And on our end, it was called a Boom Master. Um, and it was absolutely thrilling to watch. I was bowled over. You got to lay in the bottom of the plane next to the Boom Master and watch them. It's like, you know, like how your kids have the joystick and everything, guiding this thing going, I don't know how fast we were going, uh, to hook up. And, um, it was just amazing, just amazing. And so, uh, the whole point of the trip was to impress upon employers like us the importance of what the time and the training that our National Guard and our Reserves do on a continual basis because they never know when they're going to be called to actual duty. And so they have to constantly practice, practice, practice so that, you know, they're ready to go. Um, it was spectacular. I took awesome pictures, um, and posted on my Facebook and everything. But now that it's, it is, um, Veterans Week, Veterans Day coming up, um, I just want to, um, really, uh, we, within our organization, we reached out and we found, um, some of the members of our Montgomery County team who are in the National Guard and in the Reserves. And we are highlighting one of them with their permission, obviously, each day of the job they have there as well as the job they have with us. And, um, we were asked at the end of the day, um, to sign a document, uh, that this group that supports them. I'm not going to read the whole document, but basically we are making a pledge um, to really support, um, our members of our staff who are in the National Guard and the Reserves, giving them the flexibility and really, you know, uh, bending over backwards because we know how much they sacrifice. Sometimes their deployments are short and sometimes they can be for a whole year. Um, so it's a lot of sacrifice on all our parts and it's our role that the county plays in the defense of our country. And so, um, like I said, um, I, I'll just read the beginning of it. It goes on, but, um, "We recognize the Guard and Reserve are essential to the strength of our nation and the well-being of our communities. In the highest American tradition, the patriotic men and women of the Guard and Reserve serve voluntarily in an honorable and vital profession. They train to respond to their community and their country in time of need. They deserve the support of every segment of our society. If these volunteer forces are to continue to serve our nation, increased public understanding is required of the essential role of the Guard and Reserve in preserving our national security." And it goes on the different ways that we can do this. So I am going to go ahead and sign on behalf of Montgomery County and my fellow Commissioners, but I just, um, wanted to point out, uh, like I said, I think all of us have deep respect, but forever it took it to a whole new level for myself. And, um, I think we should all, when we see someone serving, um, thank them for their service. Uh, if you know someone, make a special effort, um, to let them know, uh, even if they're not serving anymore, what, what they were willing to do for all the rest of us. And this week, uh, we actually have a number of services on Friday. I know that there's many opportunities for all of us across the community to do our small part. You know, my, I know we have veterans in the room. I know Michael served and Deb served and there's probably others. Um, so, you know, we will be remembering you and forever thankful for all that you did and will do. Uh, but I think it's upon all of us to, uh, go the extra mile and really thank the families as well. So I'll go ahead and sign it, but that's my big thing this week is, um, I just have, uh, my heart gets even, you know, more deeply touched after this experience. And, um, just thank you, thank you, thank you to all of our veterans, all of those who've made the ultimate sacrifice and their families and those in the Guard and in the, uh, and the Reserves. I truly, truly have a deeper understanding and very much appreciate everything to speak for all of us.
Thank you for doing that and for bringing a light to that.
I can't wait to do something like that. Can you imagine me up there?
Uh, no. There would be, no way.
She doesn't like to fly, so this would be her worst nightmare, my biggest thrill. Commissioner Rice, I have to take exception to something you just said there. You said, she said, "It's my biggest thing this week." Uh, no, today's election is your biggest thing this week.
That's true.
But we're all going to be celebrating tonight.
I wasn't going to bring that up.
Well, Judy is, so.
That's right.
But I'm going to go ahead and sign this and it is really an honor to sign on behalf of all of us. So, you know, I salute all of them and the families. And I know we have a member of a family who's, um, loved one.
Joanna here, my assistant, yes, her husband is in the National Guard, yeah.
So it goes to all of you. So thank you, thank you, thank you, and please tell your.
But he's coming home this weekend, so there's going to be happiness.
This is the National Chair of their group and then the Secretary of Defense.
Nice.
Lloyd Austin. And so we will, um, and we're just going to go the extra mile from here on out to do a little bit more than we've always done.
Nice.
Okay, and Joanna, I think your husband's coming home this weekend, isn't he?
Oh, nice.
Yep. Great. Well, speaking of Carolyn being on the ballot this year, it's Election Day and, um, we certainly hope that all eligible voters, this is your last day to get out to vote and make your voices heard.
Yep.
Although we've been having heavy, heavy early voting here at the County Administration Building for weeks now, please know that today you cannot vote in this building and you're going to have to find your polling place. If you don't know where it is, call the Board of Elections and they'll be able to direct you to where you're supposed to go. And the polls are open tonight until seven thirty. And, um, also I have to give a shout out because guess what we're going to have in our yards? Campaign signs that we, it's going to be over with tomorrow. So you can recycle them at the Solid Waste District at one oh oh one in Crete, in Crete Lane in Moraine. Is there going to be like a sign that's going to say? You can put your signs there, you know?
I'm not sure, but I can.
Okay, probably there will be.
There is a place, Judy.
Is there? Okay. Good, because I've got some.
Just a few.
Yep.
Carolyn, do you want us to keep yours?
Yes.
Okay, we'll be keeping Carolyn's.
Okay. One other quick thing, and that is, um, uh, I love Miami Valley Meals. They're just do a great, great job for, uh, people that, um, don't know where their next meal is coming from. And they have been preparing their Thanksgiving Turkey Takeaway. And Wednesday, November twenty-third, there, there are five places that they're going to be distributing uh, wonderful, wonderful food, since I helped put it together Saturday, so you know it's going to be good. And it's, they're all going to be available until it's gone. So it's first come, first served. Here are the places.
Did you roast the turkeys?
Huh?
Did you roast the turkeys?
Is that what you do with the turkey roasted?
They have actual chefs, so it's all going to be great food.
Trust me, it's all prepared. I just am there, have some laughs. No, but here are the places, here are the places. Trotwood Madison High School from nine to twelve, and that's Wednesday, the twenty-third. University of Dayton Arena from nine to twelve. Omega Baptist Church, twelve to three. Boys and Girls Club, twelve to three. And Fairborn Phoenix Theater from twelve to three. So any of those sites, and I will repeat it next week, uh, but it's November twenty-third. I initialled the polls.
I saw pictures of you actually working, so I know you did. That's it. Okay, well, thank you, Judy. No, seriously, and thank you for doing that. You know, Judy, we always call her our Food Commissioner, but she truly, you know, is passionate about hunger in our community. And this week, they've worked so hard.
For a food summit.
For the food summit, Joanna and the team and Judy and many, many others. And so I just want to say thank you for highlighting, um, how serious hunger is in our community.
Yeah, it definitely is.
And it's, you know, it's one of those things we can't seem to get over, but.
Yeah.
We, uh, we sure are, groups like this, this, this group came together during the pandemic and.
It's great, they're great.
They've been doing amazing work. You know, it was chefs that had nothing else to do for a while.
Yeah, that's how it started.
And they all came together and, um, they really, they did this last year as well. And, um, it's a good group, so I'm glad we can continue to support them. Okay, so like every month we celebrate something. And this, this month is very important. It's Adoption Month. And it's important to us because we have an ongoing need in Montgomery County for adoptive parents and foster families. And you can view these, uh, the children that are available waiting for their forever families under our Children's Services tab at mcohio.org. And what we do is informational meetings are held every month. And there are a few requirements. You have to at least be twenty-one years old. And you have to have sufficient financial resources to be able to support children and pay for their shelter. And I think the main thing is just to have a desire to be a successful role model for these children that really need you. So you have to have thirty-six hours of pre-service training that we provide along with some home study. Uh, but that thirty-six hours can go very fast from people I know that have adopted or foster. Um, you can call nine three seven, two two four kids for more information. That's nine three seven, two two four kids.
All right, uh, be no other business to our next, um, Montgomery County Commission Meeting. Will be Tuesday, November fifteenth at one thirty PM. Do I have a motion to adjourn?
Move to adjourn.
Second. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye. It is adjourned and now we'll go into the viewing of the Free Pike Bridge Rehabilitation Project in the city of Trotwood.
Oh, right.
Yes.
Yes.
Commissioners, uh, David Shields is our project manager on this project. He'll be doing the presentation.
We'll let those who need to leave, leave.
They don't even wait for. I know they don't. They're really just, you know, come on.
John should, John should see where we're spending our money.
Exactly. Uh-huh. Okay, now we can start.
They're gone. Everybody that needs to be gone is gone.
Well, thank you, Commissioners, for this opportunity to, uh, talk to you about this important project in the city of Trotwood. This is the Free Pike, Free Pike Bridge Repair Project, uh, also known within the city of Trotwood limits as Main Street. It is located right next to State Route forty-nine and just north of Wolf Creek Pike. And it spans dry run. This is an aerial view and aerial image of the location. The bridge itself is highlighted in yellow. A little bit of background on this project. This was built in nineteen seventy-seven. Uh, the type of structure is a two-span cast-in-place concrete frame structure. The project goal is to repair the existing, uh, to repair existing structural damage and loss of backfill due to scour below the bridge. I'll show some pictures of, uh, what's going on out there, uh, shortly. And, uh, there's currently a road closure. Uh, this has been closed since I think it was June, fall.
It's been closed a while. I've noticed it.
Yeah, it's been closed a while. Um, there was settlement in the roadway, um, due to what we've determined to be a loss of backfill behind the abundant walls of the structure. And, uh, this led to potential of, uh, uh, safety issues for the Trotwood public and damaged property. So in, in caution, we decided that, uh, the best, the best course of action would be to close the road until we could repair the bridge. Project scope includes repair, repairs to the existing structure, restoration of backfill, replacement of the existing pavement, installation of waterproofing on the structure, and installation of scour prevention measures inside the structure to prevent this from happening again. As you can see, it's a little difficult, uh, in two-dimensional images. Uh, you can see that on the left, left image there, we do have some settlements. Um, I asked our bridge inspectors to go out and take the picture to the right. It's actually kind of hard to see. I'm going to step away here for a second. It just so happens that there's a string line that runs right along, right where the guardrail is. Uh, so it's kind of hard to see in that picture, but you can see the pavement is actually settled about three and a half inches in that location. And this is what's going on in the inside of the structure. A lot of times, uh, dry run is aptly named. It is, there's hardly any water going through it. And you can see, well, and then when we do have a significant rainstorm, the water elevations come up quickly, which leads to increased, uh, scour susceptibility. On the picture on the left, uh, you can see this discolored orangish rusted kind of looking area. This is concrete, so it's, uh, there may be rust coming from the reinforcing steel inside the structure. But that's the difference in, um, elevation from one section of it, the structure to the other. And it settles probably a good, uh, five or six inches. On the right-hand side, you can see more evidence of that settling. We have one impacted property on this project. Uh, it is on the north side of Free Pike. We will need a temporary easement for the purposes of constructing the repairs to this project. The project is owned by Dennis and Teresa Denlinger. And acquisition of zero point two seven nine acres of temporary easement, uh, is necessary to access the structure to, um, adjust it back to its original position. This is a street-level view of the property on the north side of the road. Project costs, uh, as, as is typical with most of our projects, we will be performing the construction engineering services with our own on-staff inspection, inspection team. Right-of-way costs will be determined by real estate appraisal. We currently have a consultant working on putting together design bill documents in order to expedite this project. The design bill document preparation, uh, is set to cost sixty-five thousand, fifty-one dollars and no cents. And construction is estimated to cost five hundred and seventy-six thousand, four hundred and fifty dollars for a total of six hundred forty-one thousand, five hundred one dollars. Project schedule, uh, once we have your approval, we will proceed with right-of-way acquisition, as early as this month and hope to have it concluded by January of twenty twenty-three. And at that point, we anticipate being able to go directly to advertisement. Uh, because this is a design bill project, advertisement does take a little bit longer since the construction contract or the, uh, the, the construction company will need to have a designer come on board and do some preliminary engineering, uh, to determine what, uh, the best way to fix the structure is. And then design and construction, we anticipate construction beginning, uh, in the spring of this year and ending by fall of next year. Any questions?
David, I would just say, and I commend Paul, uh, we have more bridges than anybody in the state. And, um, I think Paul's made up in his mind that he's going to repair or replace all of them. And, uh, people really notice the work, Paul. I mean, people, people know that these bridges are, are bad and that you're replacing them. So I just want to commend the county engineer and his staff, David, you and your team. Uh, you guys are doing a fantastic job.
Thank you. I owe it all to my staff, but, uh, thank you. And, uh, they do a great job. We, we got a lot of compliments about Philadelphia Drive when it opened. People were happy to see it open, it opened ahead of schedule, actually.
Yeah, great job, Paul. That bridge looks fantastic, so.
I was the project manager on that project, so.
Great job. Thank you, David. Thank you. It does, it looks great. And a lot of people fish off of that, too. And a lot of people fish off of that, too.
Okay, that's it. We were wondering, so we had a project review with the Ohio Department of Natural Resources when the project concluded, wanted to make sure that everything was done to their satisfaction per the contract documents. And Aaron Rourke, who works for the Department of Natural Resources, was wondering if with the wider sidewalk, if people would be more likely to fish.
Yep.
Yeah, same people.
So thank you.
Excellent. Yeah, it's great. Thanks.